Good evening. This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on March 19, 2024 at 6:15 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. For the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. If you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I... Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have one set. Are we ready to proceed?
Yes.
I would make a...
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 12, 2024.
Second.
Actually, are they the 12th or the 19th?
It's the minutes. See, this it's the minutes of, it should be minutes of March 19, 2024.
Yeah, March 19, right?
No. What? No, today's the 19th. It is the 12th.
The why is it saying that?
This is...
It's the...
Okay.
Provided those minutes were amended to reflect the correct date of March 12.
Oh, God.
Are the minutes were wrong?
The minutes have the wrong date. Sorry. So, restating, motion to approve the minutes dated March 12, 2024.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Who's on first?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, use of the shellfish mitigation fund as matching funds for Mass Bay Estuaries grant for a shellfish resource study. Michelle?
Sure. So, I don't think there's any action for the Board to take this evening. We were trying to do some research on the history of the shellfish mitigation fund. The Harbor Master is looking to apply for a state grant and use these as matching funds, and we're recommending that we authorize the Board through Article 6, actually through town meeting, to be able to use those funds, so you don't need to take a separate vote tonight.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you for looking into that, and certainly we hope we get the grant.
And just as a note, I will be writing a letter of support for the grant to the Harbor Master tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Next is to consider the petition of National Grid to relocate the regulator station currently located in the center of the 3A rotary. We have JR Frye on the line.
Good evening.
Hi, JR.
Um, so, if you will actually wait one moment, I will come into the room.
Oh, okay. It sounds like you're in an echo chamber, which is the hallway.
Respect.
Run a tight ship around here, JR. It's very quick.
That's quite a way to make an entrance.
One way. Good evening. Nice to see you all.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So, National Grid is proposing to relocate the regulator station that is currently in the middle of the 3A rotary, and they will be relocating it south of the rotary into an area that is outside of... All of this work, by the way, is in state highway layout, but the, um, they will be relocating it to an area outside the existing rotary, as well as outside the proposed roundabout as part of the 3A project. We identified this issue to them during the design of the 3A rotary, and so they agreed to pick up this work within their own capital improvement plan so that it would not impede or affect the cost of the 3A improvement project as a whole. If they had elected to do this work as part of that project, it would have cost the state an additional, well, I don't know what the value of this work is, but the state would have had to pay for 50% of it. Additionally, it would have held up the job, probably cost it two or three months' worth of delays. So, we're very happy that National Grid elected to proceed in this manner, and in a sense, it's a little bit like getting a shovel in the ground for the 3A project, because it's one of the necessary precursors to getting that job done. The petition before you is a request from National Grid via Mastot to allow National Grid to work overnight. As you can see on the plan there, they have a large amount of piping that they need to remove from the, uh, from that red outlined area within the rotary, and not the inside of the rotary. They'll be able to do that work during the day, but within the rotary roadway, yes, there. That, they'll have to do that work at night because the restrictions on traffic would be, would make for an unsafe work environment for the workers, and the congestion... ...holds that may experience some level of discomforture due to an elevated noise level while they, because they have to do vacuum excavation around those live transmission pipes.
Okay. Thank you. And those neighbors have been notified, correct?
Yes, they were notified, uh, the Monday prior.
Okay. Do you have any idea the level of noise?
Um, it's tough to say, and it's going to vary significantly depending on the receptor because there are various other structures and elements within the way between where the noise is being generated and the receptor themselves. So, it's hard to say with any precision what that level of noise will be. I can make sure that, I know that our engineers for, um, the 3A project will be out there periodically to observe conditions, and I can ask them to take a noise reading.
Okay. Joe?
I just want to follow up on our Chair's question. You say they were notified, were they notified of this hearing this evening?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, and...
We wanted to set it up as though it was a normal, um, a normal process request that National Grid would do if they were going to work in a town road.
Right.
So that we could give the best notification to the residents that we could.
And how was that noticed on, like flyers or an email, or how, do you know how that was?
I believe it was mailed out.
Mailed. Okay, great. And I assume we've heard no comments from...
We have not. We have no comments.
Okay, because I do appreciate that there may be some real noise issues, and so will there be a number posted so if anyone has a real concern while it's going on, they can, they know who to call, who to contact?
Yes, and we can include that, I'll include a note back to that effect and notify the Board that I'm, when I do that, back to National Grid to make sure that they follow the normal procedures that we always request of them, where they provide the notification two weeks ahead of time and provide any, they have a hotline number...
Yep.
...that people can call.
And will this activity disrupt National Grid service?
That I'm not 100% sure of, but I don't believe it will. I think it's all on the transmission side that they need to do this work, and so it should not interrupt service on the distribution side.
Great. I mean, it sounds like you've, you've thought this out, and it looks like a good plan to go, so thank you.
Bill?
I mean, I think it's in more than three houses. I mean, you've got that, when you come around the road and you've got that street that, yeah, Green Street, first of all, right? And the noise is going to carry up to Green Street. There are houses, um, right beyond the Horizon Building on Green Street.
Yeah, I was thinking like...
Then you've got that little, oh, sorry.
I was thinking that those first couple of houses right on Green Street might be the most affected.
Well, you've also got beyond Green Street, there's a little road to, there's a little, like, cul, it's on a cul-de-sac, but a little roadway to the right.
It's a private driveway with, all of the addresses are on Justice Cushing.
Yep.
Yeah, and so those are fairly set back, and there's a fair amount of trees between, but again, it's tough to know precisely how that noise will carry.
And even on the base of Justice Cushing, you've got like two or three houses right there on the left-hand side, too. At least two very close to the rotary and not far up. As you go, start elevates, a couple up there as well.
Forty-five Summer is very close. That was one of the ones that I was confident would be affected.
I guess, you know, obviously, the concern is 21 nights of this is not going to be easy on those residents. Is there anything, is there anything that can be done to mitigate the noise?
I did ask National Grid about that, so the reason for the noise is they'll be using a vac truck. They said they'll, they did attempt relatively recently to install noise mitigation on the truck itself, but what they found is that it significantly impeded airflow through the blower, and so it, the truck was ineffective, basically, under those conditions. Whether or not there are other mitigations that might be available, I'm not sure, because it's a little bit of a mobile site. They'd, anything else that they did, if they were having to construct it and then take it down every night to get it out of the roadway, um, that presents, I mean, you'd end up looking, it'd be a lot more nights of work that they'd be doing if they were spending a significant amount of time putting up chain link fencing, hanging some kind of mitigation, taking it down, taking the fence down. I'm not, I'm not sure how they could be reasonably efficient.
How does, how does work like this and noise of this level, how does, how does it, how does it fit in with the noise bylaw? Like, is it because an act of this, like, what is wave it, or, we do have a noise bylaw in town, and I've had citizens calling me and say, hey, this night work is a violation of noise bylaw, and I've never really understood how that does happen, because it's National Grid working on, like, you went through this with last summer, National Grid working at Main Street on, at night, maybe last fall.
Right from the first...
And I'm wondering, like, how can we have a noise bylaw in town that would restrict this type of activity? Does the Select Board action override that, you know?
Where the Select Board deems it's in the best interests of the town generally and the operations of the town, yes. The Select Board can overrule it. The Board of Health has the authority to overrule it. That usually happens if there's like a sanitary issue that, where you have an emergency spill type of situation. The Police Department can override it. So, there are a number of exigent factors...
Sure.
...that can, uh, that would cause an authority to make that decision.
Okay. I mean, three weeks is a lot. Hopefully, they can get it done within three weeks. I just would, I mean, I would hate to have residents experience loud noise from, what do they start, like nine o'clock, eight o'clock?
It's 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM...
5:00 AM, yeah.
...are the standard hours for Mastot night work.
Yep. Okay. All right, thanks, Chair. Appreciate it.
So, if I can follow, there's nothing before us tonight that would have the Select Board do anything with respect to the noise bylaw. So, we're not taking any action that would say, you know, it doesn't apply. That's, that's not before us. But I do want to follow up a little bit more, if you don't mind, on what Bill was saying, because it's an important concern. It's not just the work that's done, but it's also the auxiliary cars that are there, you know, they're backing up, and you hear the beep beep at 3:00 in the morning. I want to make sure that that process is being managed, because often that disturbs neighbors even more than the actual work. So, like, for example, do we know where cars are going to park, what the access will be, you know, coming in at, in and out of the work project so that you don't have the trucks, you know, going further into this neighborhood or even the adjacent neighborhoods causing additional noise?
My belief is that they will, most of them will park right in the rotary, but I can, I will confirm that, that that's their intention.
Yep. Okay. Great. Nothing else.
I just had a thought.
Sure.
So, Chair, one of the things to talk to them about, and I was going to go exactly down the path that Joe just did, but I'll take it a step further. So, the reverse alarms certainly are, are just, you know, individually, perhaps the most, you know, distracting thing that people are going to hear at home. The other thing that happens a lot are big empty dump trucks. As something hits an empty dump truck, it echoes like a bomb went off. So, to the extent that they are able to, just remind them that this is a residential area, 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM is a very difficult time to be working. They're not moving, like, normally when National Grid does this work, right, they're doing it over a mile, and they're moving every night. These are the same people for three weeks. So, just impress that on them, that if they can plan ahead, try to minimize the big, you know, the backup alarms, the empty trucks, the, all that kind of stuff, I think that that would probably go a long way.
Yes. Thank you.
And I do appreciate the fact, Chair, I know that you do go to the site, work sites, and you do, do take steps to try to mitigate disruption to our residents. I mean, I've seen you out, I saw you out there in 3A, I'm sorry, on the Main Street project at night, so I appreciate you going out there and doing that. So, I mean, I know you probably can't go out there every night, but where you can go out there to monitor activity and try to implement new mitigation where possible, that'd be appreciated as well. Thank you.
Sure.
And I assume that this has been run by the Hingham Police Department in terms of traffic issues?
Because it's state highway layout, they run the details through the state police first...
Okay.
...I think. But they do have to have a fully approved traffic plan...
Right.
...through Mastot. Mastot is very rigorous about that.
And again, not just police, but fire, if, you know, if a fire truck needs to get to one of these adjacent properties where...
Yep.
...they're not going to be blocked?
Correct.
Okay. Or, to put it differently, there's an alternative path that will allow them to...
Yeah, there, I believe they're going to basically restrict access within the roundabout in the area that they're working...
Yep.
...so that there will be one lane that will be permitted to pass.
Yep. Great. Thank you. No other questions?
And do you think the timeline is accurate, that they'll start April 8?
I believe that the start date is accurate, but I don't know about the actual duration of the work.
Okay.
That's what, that's their estimate.
Right.
We have to rely on that...
Sure.
...until we, until they open up the road and find a bunch of spaghetti that doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Well, if you can keep us posted on that, if that's going to change.
And they're not going to hit any water lines, are they?
No. I won't be causing rust in your head.
Exactly. Okay.
And one more thing, and can you, I mean, the Joe's question about service disruption, can you confirm that, too? That's an important point. So, if anybody's service can be disrupted with this, we need to let them know, or National Grid needs to let them know immediately.
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your work on this. Certainly, it will be inconvenient, and we want to try to mitigate as much as possible, but it's work that needs to get done. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. Ready to move forward?
I make a motion.
Yep.
I make a motion to sign the letter of support for National Grid's request to relocate the regulator station currently located in the center of the 3A rotary during the evening hours of 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, beginning in April 2024, and expected to conclude in May 2024.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you, JR.
With all the budgets and... No. Now, I think one of the things that I noticed, and I know others noticed, is the rate increase that has been proposed by HMLP, and that's something that Tom May and I have been in active discussions with HMLP to see to what extent that rate increase can be addressed, possibly smoothed out. We're continuing those discussions, and in light of that, I'd like to hold off on further discussions on the budget, because the HMLP rate increase affects almost every line item in the budget, and then we want to make sure that if there's going to be a change, it's reflected in the budgets when they're finally voted upon by this Board.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe, and Tom, for your work on this, and certainly our partners at HMLP for working on this with us. Certainly, the utilities costs and the increase in utilities affects every municipal budget as well as the school budget. So, I would like to also hold off and vote, we will have another meeting this week, Thursday, so that we have those final numbers. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
Not tonight. Thank you, though.
Okay. Are you comfortable with waiting till Thursday?
Sure. Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
What we're looking to do, and with your support, is find a, put in place a path to increase the Assistant Conservation Officer's position within our Conservation Department from a part-time position at 24 hours to 35 hours a week without any impact on the operating budget. Just by way of background, on the 15th of February, our Conservation Officer, Shannon Palmer, and I met with the Personnel Board and presented an updated position description, you know, advancing the GOV HR process, making the necessary updates for that role, but critically including a path to creating, make, recasting the position as a full-time role for three reasons. First and foremost, to support the Conservation Officer with the level of work that's entailed in the department. Second, moving forward, we expect the Conservation Department and the Commission to be more involved in resiliency-related issues. We want to be sure that our concert, our department has the bandwidth to get to that level of engagement. And third, in the work that we've done in recruiting for the Conservation Officer and others, we've seen how challenging it has been to identify and secure quality part-time people. We think that making the position a full-time one will help include, will increase the number of candidates, it'll also increase the quality of candidates, so that will be serving Hingham well in the long run. As I said, the, our proposed approach has no impact on the operating budget, meaning no incremental increase in ask or increase in the budget. There's an 11-hour increase, and we propose to cover it in two ways. First, where we are, our community planning department will be contracting with the Community Preservation Committee to provide administrative support and services. What that will do in effect is free operating dollars that we can use to devote to cover a portion of the, those increased hours for the Assistant Conservation Hours Officer, 11, excuse me, eight of the 11 hours in question. For the remaining three hours, we are proposing to use the Wetlands Fund, which is an accumulation of the town's portion of state mandated fees that are part of the conservation filing process. We expect that to work in a straightforward way, and we think it's a valid resource for a number of reasons. First and foremost, the, right now, the Wetlands Fund, at least at the outset of FY24, the balance was about $42,500. We have not used that fund for any purpose for many years, so it has grown over time because the, on average, the town's portion of collections has been about $7,200 a year. We expect that to cover those three hours a week, assuming the position is a Grade Six and a Step Three, that would give us some flexibility, at least in the hiring process, it would cost about $6,450 a year, meaning less than we would expect to gain in terms of increased fees. Looking five years out, assuming step increases and even assuming a 3% COLA, we would expect that the Wetlands Fund would still be at a value of about $49,000. So, the fund would be largely intact. Tapping it would give us some capability to extend the reach of the department through a full-time Conservation Officer. So, that's, that's the, I guess, the basis of it. I just want to conclude by saying, earlier this month, the Conservation Commission met and voted 7-0 in favor of using the Wetland Fund's filing fees for this purpose.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you for the presentation, and it's, it sounds like a really creative solution to, to this issue, so thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is a proper use of the Wetlands Protection Fund. That's been reviewed and cleared?
Yes. Conversations, including Shannon Palmer, Conservation Officer, myself, as well as John Cofflin, our counsel.
Great. Because I spent many years on the Conservation Commission, and I fully support the work of the Conservation Agents, and I think getting this extra level of support and time is critical, so I am in favor of it. Thank you.
Bill?
I think it's a great use of the funds. Well, thank you for coming up with a creative idea to fund, how fund the position.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
So, I move to approve the expenditure of funds by the Town of Hingham Conservation Commission for... And for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you, Art. Thanks, JR.
Night, guys.
Good night. Next on the agenda is FY25 financial forecast update.
I can take this one.
Sure.
So, in lines with, as Joe explained a few minutes ago, the review of Article F coming on Thursday, I think it would be appropriate to, for us to have a chance to update the forecast with the numbers that we're going to update through the, from the HMLP change on, for Thursday's discussion and present it then.
Great.
If you don't mind.
Yes, I think that makes sense. The Forecast Group did meet today, but certainly we want to see those final numbers.
Exactly.
Any questions or comments, Joe? Bill?
Nope.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, so we will take that up at Thursday's meeting as well. Next on the agenda is to consider the appointment to fill a vacancy on the Cultural Council. For a list of talent bank applicants and board and committee vacancies, please visit hingham-ma.gov/sb. Do we have any appointments this evening?
I'm going to motion two appointments. First one is to appoint Craig Hutchinson to the Cultural Council to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I make a motion to appoint Peter Schnorr to the Cultural Council. I believe it's pretty, I think it's pretty close to being fully staffed now, but I'm not positive of that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Next, we can ask Sharon.
Yes. Okay, next, I'm sorry.
Are you interested?
I am otherwise occupied.
I can make a third motion.
No, thank you. You're so generous.
He didn't fill out an application, so...
I love that.
Not tonight. Next on the agenda is public comment. Any members... Then, any members of the public who like to make a comment, something not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none. Next is Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Art?
Nothing, just nothing more this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Michelle?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay. Tom?
Nothing this evening.
I know it's been a busy week. It's only Tuesday. Bill?
Nothing.
Joe?
Nothing this evening.
And I have nothing either. We will be back Thursday at 6:00 PM, ready to take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at 6:45 PM. Thank you.